All right, all right. Good afternoon, East Columbus. All right, how y'all doing today? All right, my name is DeMarco D. One Johnson, and I'll be your emcee for today. We would like to thank you all for joining Toya Tucker and your elected officials for this first annual community organizational rally sponsored by the Achilles Society. Before we get things started, we would like to open up in prayer with Minister Steve Thomas of Canaan Baptist Church. Before he comes up here, we would like to thank him and the church for allowing us to use his beautiful facility to have this come-together meeting, all right? Mr. Steve Thomas.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, on every beginning of every endeavor, if we started in prayer, God will hear our prayers, and he shall answer. Let us pray. Father God, in the mighty name of thy precious Son, Christ Jesus, Lord, we humble ourselves at this time and this hour, coming to you in prayer, Father. Look at the heels for which all of our blessings come to us daily, Father, asking you to lend an ear, Father. Lend and open your mind and your heart unto the situations that we encounter down here each and every day, Father. Lord, you know of our situations, you know of these perilous times that we are going through right now, and Lord, and we're asking you to render a word, render a suggestion, and give us understanding, the way and the direction we should travel and go moving forward. Father, open up the minds and the hearts of the leaders. Open the minds and the hearts of the families. Open the minds and the hearts of the community, Father, so they will hear your words when you render your word down to us, Lord. Help us to be obedient to your word, so we can walk in wisdom and knowledge and understanding in all that you shall have us to do on this journey. Lord, we know that if we keep our hands in your hands, that all things will be made hopeful and prosperous. Lord, these are the prayers that we ask of you right now, in the mighty name of Christ Jesus. So let the words of my mouth and meditation of my heart be accepted when I sight, for you are truly my strength and my redeemer. For these and all the many blessings we humbly ask and pray, and none other than our Lord and Savior, Christ Jesus. May we all say amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you, Minister Thomas. Moving towards the introduction of speakers, they each take three minutes to introduce themselves. Okay, I apologize, sir, thank you. Going to the introduction of speakers, they will take three minutes to introduce themselves. So stand by. Starting off with Mayor Skip Henderson.
Good afternoon. Had to check if it was still morning or afternoon. I'm gonna keep my mask on, since we're gonna be sharing the microphone. First, let me just tell all of you how grateful I am that you have taken time out of your day to come unite with us in a discussion on what we do as a community to try to curb this gun violence, this violence in our young people who are losing their lives and our hearts breaking for the families who have lost loved ones. You know, we've got the people you see and that you'll hear from, these speakers, we are here as a united front. We are all on the same page. We are linking arms and working together to try to continue to move the needle and find ways to address this violence. It's gotta stop. There are a few folks in here that aren't gonna be speaking, I wanna make sure I recognize them. First, I wanna thank Counselor Tucker for putting this together. This is, the conversation is a critical first step, but I will remind you, this is just a first step. The conversation has to yield actionable items, things that we can take into the communities, take into our churches, take into our government, and implement, so that we can begin to make a real difference. Also wanna recognize a couple of other counselors. We've got Counselor Barnes, Pop Barnes, Counselor John House, I did not, and I think that may be all of the counselors. We've got State Representative Carolyn Hughley, who is here, and our Deputy City Manager, Lisa Goodwin, and Mr. Smirey, Calvin Smirey, State Representative, Mr. Chairman, has joined us. And I do that not to bring accolades to these individuals for being here, but to show you that this is a, this is a problem that all of us are united on. So I want to hear from you today. I want to hear your questions, your comments, so that we can continue to do the things we need to do. We spend tons of money, as a city, on programs to try to find people jobs, try to get them the skills they need, try to get them GED, get them tutoring, give them mentoring, give them guidance and leadership, and we still have some folks out there that don't want a job, that don't want any of that. They just wanna do bad. That's why we've got the brave men and women of our CPD and our Sheriff's Office to make sure that the folks that make those conscious decisions not to try to better their lives and contribute to this community, we're gonna find them, and we gotta lock them up. So anyway, thank you for being here. I do look forward to your questions and a very honest dialogue.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Next, we'll be having Counselor Woman, Toya Tucker.
Thank you. See him? Okay. Thank you, DeMarco, and thank you, Mayor. And I also wanna thank everyone who agreed to come out today, our Chief of Police, our City Manager, Isaiah Hughley, the Sheriff, and Deputy Chief Graham. I appreciate all the citizens who decided to come here on this Saturday, because of course you could be anywhere else. We know the what. We know that we have a issue, we know we have a crime issue, not only in District Four, but in Columbus, Georgia as a whole. However, the question is now, how? How do we fix this problem? And honestly, it's not gonna be a one answer, or just one thing. It's gonna be multiple things to fix the problems that we have, because, first of all, we did not get here overnight. It took time, and we're not gonna fix this overnight. It's going to take time. So each morning when you wake up, think about the how. You ask yourself, when you look in the mirror, how can I be an effective asset to my community to help all of us improve on the quality of life? How can we do things to help cure this violence? So you're gonna hear us, as the elected leaders, and the City Manager, and the Chief of Police, speak on our perspective and how we can help. But when you leave here today, and when you're getting, when you're gonna ask your questions, think about how you can be that individual. How can you help with this issue of crime right now? So again, I just wanna thank you for coming out. I'm so thankful to see all of you, it's a nice crowd, and just enjoy and participate.
Thank you, Counselor Woman Tucker. Next, we will have City Manager, Isaiah Hughley.
Good afternoon. I'm Isaiah Hughley, City Manager of Columbus, Georgia. I have been City Manager for 16 years, and I basically wanted to say to you this morning, as you view me as your African-American City Manager in downtown, I don't want you to think that he is sitting on the sixth floor, and he doesn't understand what everyday people are going through out here in this community, and more specifically, on the south side of town. Just a little bit about me, so that you know that I understand, and I didn't come here today to tell you that here's the solution to the problem. I want you to know that I understand the problem, and there is a solution, but we've got to take a multifaceted approach to get to that solution, and that solution is not going to come overnight. But what I want you to know is that I'm that African-American City Manager, sitting on the sixth floor, that understands what it is and what it's like to be poor. Because I grew up on a dirt road, in a three-room shack with no indoor facilities. I grew up where my father was an alcoholic, and he beat my mama. I grew up where my mama said, "I'm not gonna take it anymore," and decided to move to Phoenix City, Alabama, in public housing, where we were able to get the first indoor facilities. See, some folk have never known what it's like to have to go through the woods and squat to use the restroom. I understand. Some people don't know what it's like to have to go and draw your water and put it in a foot tub to take a bath. I understand. Some people don't understand what it's like to have to go to the store with food stamps. When I graduated high school, 12th grade, I was still walking down Foot Bendin' Road, going to the store with food stamps. I understand and have been around drugs, and the alcohol, and all of that. I understand violence. You know, I was standing beside my mother when she got shot. She got shot by not someone on the street, but from my uncle, trying to shoot my daddy. I understand domestic violence. And so just know that I still live in South Columbus. When I leave here, I'm gonna turn left, and I'm gonna cross Forest Road, and I'm gonna cross Benavista Road to get to Steemil Road. A lot of this violence in recent weeks has been right around near my house. When I go to the store, I still go to the Rainbow on Benavista Road. I go to the Dollar Tree. When I go to Walmart, I go to Victor Drive. So I live amongst the people. I understand what we're dealing with. It's going to take a multifaceted approach to get to a solution, and that's what we need to start talking about today. But don't think that when you talk to me, I don't understand. I understand and live amongst my people. I'm Isaiah Hughley, I'm City Manager of Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, City Councilman Hughley. My apologies, sir. City Manager Hughley. Next, we will have Chief Freddie Blackman.
Good afternoon. I'm Freddie Blackman. I'm the Police Chief for the Columbus Police Department. I've been at the Police Department for the past 35 years, and I worked in various units within the Police Department. I've worked in units where we've investigated gang-related activities, I worked in units where we investigate drugs, I've worked in units where we investigate murders, robberies, and I worked in units where we've interacted with our community, to listen to the concerns of our community. So I understand that there is a need to listen to our community, and to ensure that we do all we can to ensure we have trust from our community for our Police Department. I would do all I can to ensure that Columbus is as safe as possible. But with that, with me saying that, I realize, and I want you to realize, I can't do it by myself. You're here today, and I appreciate you being here. As was stated earlier, what we are experiencing did not just start today, and it will not necessarily end today, but we can definitely work towards bringing the situation to an end by getting, or remaining actively involved, as we are today, to ensure that we communicate with each other and send a message throughout Columbus that we're all in. It's gonna take an all-in approach to understand that we really need, as I stated this past Tuesday, all hands on deck, to ensure that we send a message that's timeout for the violent behaviors that are taking place. So I look forward to working with you continuously, and as we share throughout the rest of this day, if there are questions that you have with the Police Department, please address them, and we look forward to working with you to ensure we have a safer Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Blackman. Next, we will have Deputy Chief Roger Graham.
Good morning. I'm Deputy Chief Roger Graham, I've been at the Columbus Police Department now for 32 years. I came to Columbus by way of, through the military, when I joined out of Detroit, Michigan. And my story, far as my contribution to Columbus, Georgia, is a little bit different from the gentlemen and women that you've already heard. My contribution to Columbus, Georgia, was when I got out of the military in 1989, I joined the Columbus Police Department as a patrol officer. I've been there for 32 years. This October will be 32 years. I as well as served in various units or bureaus in the Columbus Police Department that consisted of patrol services, and at that particular time, they had the Tac Squad, I was in that for several years, which along did see some violence, and then also did see some other street crime-type activity. But after that, I then went to the Bureau of Investigative Services, and there, served another several, several years in a unit that was referred to as Financial Crimes. And then later, I then went to Sex Crimes. But for the last 16 years, I've been in the Office of Professional Standards, bringing this dust to 32 years of service. But now, my personal contribution, that ended up being a direct responsibility, is that I volunteered, because of all the crime that we were having in Columbus, after working and being in administrative unit, decided to start up different things that looked at, directly looked at, the crime that was taking place in Columbus, Georgia. That was not a task that I was assigned, that was a task that I volunteered for, and I volunteered for it, and I don't even, do not even live in Columbus, Georgia. I live in Harris County. But because what I was seeing in Columbus, Georgia, with the violence, the drugs, the gangs, and all the other different things that we've talked about, I volunteered for to bring it to the department's attention more directly, to be able to bring it to the community. And so that's what, that's my personal contribution, even though now it's a responsibility, but it was never my responsibility, it was something I volunteered for, because of what I was seeing, and I'm not even a citizen of Columbus, I'm an employee of Columbus, but not a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Graham. Next, we will have Sheriff Greg Countryman.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheriff Greg Countryman. I serve as your Sheriff for Muskogee County. Counselor Toya Tucker, thank you for having this event, because I believe that it is a very, very timely event, and I don't want to lose sight of why we are here. I think that, looking at the turnout, that we know that we have an issue in our community, that we are very concerned about, and that concern is violence. From my vantage point, I think that violence is a health issue. I think that when you look at where violence occurs, it occurs in underserved communities for the most part. When I first started policing back in 1990, we had what was called the Mason-Dixon line, if you wanna call it that, or the Macon-Dixon line, to where crime did not go beyond Macon Road. But we see now that crime has gone beyond Macon Road, and is invading a lot of our neighborhoods. At the center of crime, we have to understand mental health, and how mental health plays such, such a vital role, because in underserved communities, that there are studies that show that, shows that poverty brings about mental health, mental health sometimes transforms into violence. And so as we deal with the violence in our community, we really need to understand what's at hand, but I'm glad that this meeting is here, because there are three things that we have to do. First, we have to understand that there is a problem, that's why we're all here. Secondly, we have to have a solution, that's why we need everybody, everybody here, because there are some things that happen in our community that we just don't know, and I'm dead set on saying this, I've said it publicly over and over again, that when there's violence in the community, there's always video footage, but there's someone there that saw something, and they know something. So if you can get that information to law enforcement, then we can act on that, because our job is to be finders of fact, that we can follow leads that will, that are factual, and we can make arrests. But I'm here today because not only do I want to recognize that there's a problem, and I wanna hear from you to help us to come up with better solutions, because there are some things that we just don't know. We can't fix what we don't know, and that's why we need community partners like you to help us with this, because we're not sitting down, as the City Manager said, we talk, and we talk about this every single day. I'm a product, I'm a proud product of South Columbus. This started for me in Alpine Apartments, off Conceda Road. I still have South Columbus in my heart, I have all of Columbus responsibility, but I know that there are certain things that plague certain parts of the community, and we need to meet the crime where it is, we need to meet those that have mental health issues where they are, and we need to get used to challenging ourselves to not be comfortable in everything that we do and what we hear, in order to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Countryman. Next, we will have from Cure Violence, Reggie Lewis.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Reggie Lewis, I work with TESA's Global Payments. I was a former police officer in Columbus for 10 years, been in and out of law enforcement for almost 30. I'm part of a group of private citizens that came together about two years ago to identify a solution to help our community, and that is called Cure Violence. And what Cure Violence does is it looks at violence as a health epidemic, and we apply health solutions to eradicate violence. We work with epidemiologists, we have Dr. Osante from the Health Department, we run our program under the Health Department, and the idea is to assess and interrupt violence in the community. It is a data-driven process, so we're not just simply going into a community without any effort, but the idea behind it is to interrupt the violence, to identify those who are at high risk, and as well to bring back community cohesion. Our effort is used in 10 countries around the world, 100 cities, like Baltimore, Chicago, Puerto Rico, even in Iraq. So this is a national program that has been used since about 2005, and created by epidemiologists out of Chicago. So that's why we're here today, to kinda hear some of the information that's coming out of these communities, but also to answer any questions that you may have about our program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next, we will have Byron Hickey.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank all our city leaders, Mr. Tucker, for having us here today. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Byron Hickey, I'm a former police detective with the Columbus Police Department, after working there for 30 years. I've worked in a lot of the different units that Chief Blackman talked about. I was one of the original members of the Gang Task Force back in 1988. Also, Chief Blackman and myself, we was partners in that unit. Also, Chief Blackman and I, we were partners in the Vice of Narcotics Unit as well. Just to give you a little history, to help people to understand, as a citizen, how we got to where we are today. In 1988, there was an uprising in gang violence in Columbus, Georgia, with about eight different gangs. At that time, it was something that I was monitoring as a police detective, working out at the Bureau of Investigation. At that time, I went to Major C.T. Kirkland, and I said to him that we had a gang problem in Columbus, Georgia. Major C.T. Kirkland told me, "Well, as long as they're killing each other, why should we worry about it?" And at that time, I told him, I said, "Well, we got kids who are people's children and loved ones that are here having this problem." In 1990, Ronald Holloman was killed over at Baker High School at a school dance from gang violence. At that time, Chief Wellington summoned us in, summoned me to his office, and asked me what intel we had on gangs at that time. I shared that information. At that time, you had the birth of the Gang Task Force. When we came together as a unit, we were boots on the ground. We went out, we, what we called then, we shook the bushes, we overturned rocks, cultivated informants, found out who were the main players in all these gangs, and then we started making cases against them and shutting down these gangs. We also knew that a lot of them who wanted help, as Mayor Henderson said, we provided workshops for them, we helped them get jobs, we put in other preventive programs like midnight basketball, three-on-three basketball during the summertime, and also during this time, a lot of this was going on in the project areas, Sheriff Countryman at the time was working with the Housing Authority, they was monitoring the problems with the gang activity then. So with all the collective effort, we were able to get this problem under control. So how did we get right here today, with all the violence now? Well, these units were disbanded by Chief Ricky Bourne. He took away the Gang Task Force, he took away Conditional Discharge, which was an adult program for first-time offenders, and then he took away the Juvenile Diversion Program that worked closely with juvenile court, that was helping the youth in our community. So when all these units got disbanded, we start seeing an increase in gang violence. So where are we at today? So my suggestion, as a former police detective who worked gangs in this community, and worked drugs in this community, is that I think as a community, we need to get behind the Chief of Police, we need to get behind the Sheriff, we need to support them and their effort to bring this thing under control. Because the reality is, is that we're in a crisis, we're in a serious crisis in Columbus, Georgia. And the Sheriff and the Chief, they inherited this problem. I go onto social media sites, I see where people are criticizing them and saying things, no, they inherited this problem. This problem been around. So I think what we need to do, we need, as a community collectively, we need to get behind the Sheriff and the Chief, and we need to help them, as Chief Blackman said, all hands on deck. We need to get behind them. And I want, and I want people to understand that, I understand that there is not a very good climate across the nation with law enforcement in the African-American community. I understand that. But I'm here to say that we, as a community, when they put the boots on the ground, and these officers are going, are going out here to help nip this in the bud, cutting out the head of a snake, as we say, we have got to stand with them. We don't need to be protesting, we don't need to be marching because of their efforts. We need to stand with them, to let them know that we support you. And I will share this with you before I leave, because I know that, me knowing Chief Blackman all the years that I've known him, and knowing Sheriff Countryman all the years that I've known him, when I worked in a unit, a drug unit, which was a five-agency, two-state task force, Metro Narcotic Task Force, Russell Traynor was our commander. Russell had two rules, to show up to work on time and not mistreat anybody. And I'm sure that these two leaders feel the same way. So I don't expect any police officer going out here mistreating anybody, any sheriff deputy going out here mistreating anybody, but we got to get the job done. We gotta get it done, because if not, Columbus, we're gonna have a whole lot more problems and a whole lot more bloodshed and tears. So I leave you with this, as a community, let us please, please, come together and give them all the support that they need, and getting this problem under control. Sheriff Countryman made, made, came up with a good idea the other day at the press conference, he said he's gonna have a hotline you can call in. A lot of people are concerned about retaliation from when they, when they give information to the police. Well, with this hotline, you can call it in, and you can give the information, and please, we need everybody to be involved in this. And Chief Blackman, as I said to you before, and Sheriff Countryman, I share the same with you, if y'all need me for anything, anything, I'm all in with you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Like for you giving everybody around applause, if you got a second. Like for you giving everybody around applause, if you got a second. All right. As we get ready to move into the question and answer segment, this, these are the following rules. All right. We have Mrs. Shamika Avery and Nia Williams. Could y'all please stand up? All right. If you would like to write down a question, write down a question and give it to them, they will read the question for you to them, to the speakers. If you would like to stand up and ask a question, all right, you have two minutes to ask your question. Please, if it's for everyone, let them know it's for everyone. If you want to direct your question towards somebody, please acknowledge who you would like to direct it to. All right. As, let me introduce myself. Like I said, my name is DeMarco D. One Johnson. I'm a 1996 graduate of Spencer High School. Nobody? All right. Go Greenway. There we go. There we go. All right. I'm a product of South Columbus and grew up in East Columbus. Mr. Graham here was my officer while I was at Spencer High School. After leaving Spencer, I went on to South Carolina State, where I played football and ran track, and then I went into corrections myself for 14 years. Finished up as a director at the Department of Juvenile Justice in Metro Atlanta. I'm here, I just moved back home to put in my effort, put in my effort so we can help our community, because there's a lot going on. So as you're getting your questions ready, I just want to tell you one thing, just kind of put some in your head as you're preparing your question and getting ready to talk. I'm going to take you back to a story of David and Goliath. If you look on my shirt, it says "game changer." All right? In the story of David and Goliath, David, he came to check on his brothers. All right? He came out to the battlefield to check on his brothers. His brothers had been standing there for 40 days, unable to move, unable to fight. All right? So when David came up there, he seen a task that he could handle, because he already fought the lion and the bear. He had already fought the lion and the bear and defeated both of them. So when he seen Goliath, he said, "Well, I can defeat that too. God has given me the will, he has given me the tools to defeat Goliath." So therefore, he went up there and he slayed Goliath. So within that, there was a game-changing moment at that time. The game-changing moment was that when he defeated Goliath, everybody else was able to move forward. Everybody that had been sitting there 40 days and 40 nights, listened to Goliath taunt them, was able to move forward. So at that moment, not only did he change the trajectory of his life, he could change the trajectory of everybody's life that was sitting there waiting. So as you get ready to write down your questions, or you get ready to come to the podium and speak your questions, think about the tools that God has given, thank you. Think about the tools that God has given you to be a game changer, to slay the Goliath that we have before us. Because the issues that we have right now in these streets that the sheriff is fighting, that the mayor is fighting, that the city council is fighting, that the city manager is fighting, is the Goliath. And a lot of y'all out here have the tools to defeat it. You have the tools that you, that you grew up with. You have the tools that God has placed in you. You have the tools that you, that your parents have placed in you. All right? So we all, we're, if we all come together, we can slay Goliath and allow everybody else to move forward. Amen? All right. So are we ready? Ready for question and answer? All right. So we're going to start off with the handwritten cards? We'll start off with the handwritten cards. And from there, like I said, you have exactly two minutes to go ahead and ask your question, if it's for everybody, acknowledge it's for everybody. If it's for individuals, let them know. Thank you.
Okay. So what we'll do is kind of go back and forth between me and Nia. So I'll ask a question, Nia. I've got about four or five questions in my hand, and I'll ask the first one first. It says, "Can the mayor put a curfew in place?"
The short answer is yes. The mayor, the mayor does have the authority through council to implement a curfew. And we have not implemented one, not through COVID, not through any of the other issues. But it's something that we're open for consideration. We are, much as, as Mr. Hickey said, and you've heard from the law enforcement officials and our city manager, we're all in on whatever it, it takes to start curtailing some of the, some of the gun violence. What we have, what the information that I have received from talking with our law enforcement officials, the sheriff and I talk, I talk with the chief of police every day, it's broader than that. It's broader than the, than the curfew. But yes, I think a curfew could be considered as part of an overall strategy.
I don't think the mic's on yet. I think so. Here we go. My question is, will you help stop police brutality and gang violence?
I'll take that. I'll take that since it's addressed concerning police brutality and gang violence. As I stated earlier, the various units that I've worked in, what I did not mention to you is that I've also worked in the officer professional standards, where a part of the responsibilities in being assigned to that unit was to investigate internal affairs, the conduct of police officers. And if there's any conduct that's not consistent with what's expected according to the law as well as according to our policies, it was my responsibility to ensure that that information, that that behavior was met with consequences for, for that particular employee. That police officer received consequences for any behavior that was not consistent with the law or policies. So I'm aware of what should be done. I'm al, I've also been a training instructor. I was a training director for our police department. So I'm aware of how officers should be trained. I train recruits as well as the veteran officers throughout my career. And so as the police chief, it's my responsibility to ensure that our officers are properly trained and they know how to handle themselves. So we would definitely always stay on top of that to ensure that no one is being mistreated. Regarding the gang violence, we have units in place now addressing gang violence as well as developing intelligence related to gang activities. We have a unit on the street, and we have a unit that's inside from a, from an administrative role feeding them information, sharing with them and giving them locations to go to and names to check on, so they can develop information, which would lead to arrest warrants and putting the individuals in jail to go before the judge. So we are already addressing those concerns as it relates to gang violence. We are addressing those hotspot areas, and we will continue to stay on top of that as we go forward. And if there's anyone who has any concern or any information, because we need information from our citizens, as I stated earlier, we cannot do it alone, you can call 706. If you want to remain anonymous, you can call 706-653-3188. You can call that number and leave your message. You do not have to reveal your name if you want to remain anonymous. And if you want to text the number in, if you don't want to just give that call, you want to text it in, you can text V A C S, as V like in Victor, A like in Adam, C like in Charlie, S as in Sam. V A C S 274-637. 274-637. We receive that tip, and we will follow up on that information.
Before we go, Deputy Chief Graham, can you get up and give, in reference to that gang violence question with the hotspots and, and show some of the work that you all are doing?
Yes, I can. As I stated earlier, my primary function with the police department is the officer professional standards. When someone asks a question about the police brutality, so as Chief Blackman has already outlined, the office that I'm really assigned to would be that office that would address that issue. And there is a process that goes through any one time someone wants to file a complaint as it relates to any police behavior, there's a system in place where that information can be funneled through and eventually make it to the officer professional standards. But what we, when we talk about hotspots, this, these maps up here is just simply to depict the areas that we see that we're having the majority of the problem in Columbus, Georgia, as it may relate to a particular type crime. Okay? So we do track crime. We do know what type of crime is, is in place, and we track it, we know where things are occurring, and officers are constantly deployed to these areas, because as the incidents occur, it populates. It populates. And that helps us to stay abreast of what's going on, to try to get ahead of what's occurring, to be prepared and not be caught off guard as of what's occurring in Columbus, Georgia. But it's simply, it's, it's just nothing more than a way of tracking activity. Now, we can make these particular maps or diagrams based on the particular type of crime that we're wanting to track. So if it's aggravated assaults, then we can attract aggravated assaults, and we'll quickly be able to get this information out to patrol officers to know where the, where the incidents are occurring, and, and feed, constantly feeding that to the patrol personnel so that they can stay ahead and know what's occurring in Columbus, Georgia. What was the other question about the gangs, though?
The question was, will you help stop police brutality and gang violence?
Well, it's, it's obvious, it's clear that we've all put in a, in a effort to stop gang violence. And as it, as it already has been outlined, that this is one of these efforts that's going to take everyone in the community, it's going to take a lot of effort from the police department, the sheriff department as well, but we can already see the, what's in motion to stop the gang violence. As Mr. Byron Hickey, former police officer, former detective pointed out, the process that was in place at that time, that is what we are, actually are starting to revisit to alleviate and prevent gang violence in Columbus. But it's already in place, it's already in motion on this side of the table as well as out here to deal with gang violence in Columbus, Georgia.
Okay. All right. Is L K R 2 a gang marking? It was recently spray painted on a vacant building on South Lumpkin. It was a pink building, recently painted white. Now has L K R 2 painted on the front, extremely visible.
All markings that you see or graffiti in Columbus is not necessarily gang-related. It's just like anything else, we have to find out what it is and... All righty, all, all the way out here in the audience now. You really can hear me by, start talking. No, all markings on buildings or graffiti that you see in the neighborhood is not necessarily graffiti that's related to gang activity. What we do is we look at the markings, we look at the graffiti, and we go back and we start looking, just like anything else, you start analyzing it, to try to see what it is, what meaning it has. Once we determine what meaning it has, then we then tag it as being gang graffiti and start seeing where this gang graffiti is starting to occur throughout the city. So everything that you see on, on the side of a building does not necessarily mean that it's gang graffiti. There are some gang graffiti that we know right off the back that is gang graffiti. But the initials that you provided, that you stated, I cannot clearly say that that's gang graffiti without taking a look at it, seeing there's any hidden meanings in there or messages in there, as things that we may have looked at in the past. But it's, it has to be analyzed before we make an assumption that it's gang graffiti, because sometimes people just like to put their art on the side of buildings. We see it on trains all the time, and you cannot readily say that anything is gang-related until it has actually been analyzed to be gang-related or gang information.
I, yesterday morning, I saw a video of the worst neighborhoods and the worst hoods in Columbus, and my neighborhood was on the video. And so he walks behind a plaza on South Lumpkin Road and explains that the markings indicate that there are ga, three, three gangs who have marked. It looks like that to him, anyway. Okay, so now that's behind a building, and it's not very vis, visible. You can't see it, I mean, and not too many people go back there. But then there is a building that was a pink florist store, and the build, it, it's all kind of progressed. And now it looks like there's that great big sign, L K R 2, on South Lumpkin Road. The building was painted white, and then a little bit later, it's got L K R in black letters, L K R 2 in black letters on it. It almost looks like a message. And if these markings are messages, if people are passing them every day, it, it does, it, it affects people that, you know, may be down and gloomy, or mad, or angry, to see these messages, you know, boom, you know, in their face. And so I was, that's why I was asking, I think it might be important, we had a killing, I understand, recently, very close to this area. And they do, they do matter, especially this, I mean, I, I was, I sent that video to Sergeant Hogan. I don't know if any of you were able to, to see it, about, but about almost seven minutes into it, he gets behind that building. Well, being behind that building and kind of not real visible is one thing, but to have it just blaring at, at you on this brand-new painted building is a different story, and it sends a message, I think. And people see it every day, and it stirs up feelings, and then there's a killing, and I think it's a snowball effect. And it could be something, and I don't know it, and I drive by it every day, oh, look, somebody's spray painted on that building. You know, is that their initials and their favorite number? You know, I don't know. It's upsetting, though, to think that it might be a message, and I just learned of this yesterday.
Okay. You mentioned Sergeant Hogan, and yes, her and I looked at that yesterday. I did not know that you, I did not know that you were the one that sent it in, but yes, we did look at it yesterday, and I, we appreciate you for sending it in. And that's exactly what have already been talked about this afternoon, or this morning, that we need the public's help. So that piece of information that you sent in, now we go out there, we look at it, we go back and, and see if it's actually, is there is gang-related, is there some ties to it, is there some meaning to it, is there some hidden message in it? And then we start dealing with it. So that is the beginning of dealing with just that one piece of information that you sent us, because we have to find out what it means if we don't already know what it means. So we have to have a beginning, and we appreciate you starting it for us by sending that information to us, sending that video to us, and then we start looking at it. So that's how the community works. You send us the information, then we can keep up with it, and we can develop approach to deal with the, the situation at hand, to, to, to address the gang issue, whether it's ju, addressing it from the graffiti, which is one way, you definitely need to address it by covering it up, painting over it, removing it from the community, as our source, or alleviate it. That's one way that you should address it. But we want to see where these individuals are moving around as well. So it's more toward than just, oh, I don't know if I really want to send this, this ain't really going to mean anything. No, please, send it. Let us analyze it. Let us figure out what it means. Let us figure out what we need to do with it. But that is a small part, but it's a big part in what the community can do when you start talking about gang and dealing, and looking for gang and gang activity, analyzing gang information. That's a big part. It may seem like it's small, but that is a major part, knowing where the movement is taking place. But the number one thing... But the number one thing is, you're right, it's eyesore and you want to get it out the neighborhood. You want to cover it up if it can be covered up.
The next question also has to do with gangs. It says, how many gangs do we have in Columbus, Georgia? And do we know how to ID them? Gang colors, et cetera, location, north, south, east, west?
Okay, how many gangs do we have in Columbus? That is a very tricky question. That is a very tricky question. Because I can give you a definitive number of how many gangs we have in Columbus. And at the break, when we all get in our cars and leave, some kids in the neighborhood can decide, you know what? We want to start ourself a gang and we're going to spray paint. And then it changes. But the main thing about gangs is they come and go, they change names, gangs merge together. It is a very tricky thing to try to measure exactly how many gangs you have in Columbus. When I do these other speeches, the best thing I tell people that to think about, they're in a gang, but let's concentrate on the crime that they're in, okay? They're in a gang, but let's concentrate on the crime. What I mean by that is they calling themselves whatever they calling themselves, but we have to really, really focus on the crime in which they're in and not so much as how many gangs. We don't want any gang in Columbus. We don't want to settle for five gangs, three gangs, two gangs. You don't want any gangs in Columbus. But we have an ideal and there's basically about six basic gangs because they all spin off each other, but it's about six major gangs in Columbus. Ma'am, did that address the question?
It did.
How many, three minutes?
Two.
Two minutes. Well, I am so glad to see this. It's about time. When I lived in Durham, North Carolina in 1998, it was a major gang infestation. And the mayor brought people together, just like people are together today, to explain what the gang signs are. And I wanted to say thank you to the housing authority, the strong parental involvement in community education. Columbus organizing together, funded by the Crime Prevention Department. And we thank you so much because we're reaching out to parents in public housing. And public housing, they know that people prey upon folks living in poverty, which is why they got cameras everywhere now. That's a big improvement. But it is an all hands on deck, Chief Blackman. But parents have to stop taking the goods that come from the gang activity because gang activity is organized crime and we got to be clear about that. They sell drugs, they run prostitution, they do crime. That's what makes them gay. If they were just a little group of people hanging out together, wearing some colors, that would be different. But these folks are criminals and they're older people who are using the juveniles to do their business. And that's what has to stop. We need men to stand up to it and say, no more. We are not going to keep sacrificing our children to a life of crime, filling up the jail, filling up the prisons. That's what's going on. And again, I thank the housing authority for allowing us, Alyssa Williams, Vice Coordinator, and others to go there and talk to the parents because the parents is the key. The parents is the key. Thank you. Let's come up with solutions.
Can the gun buyback program start again? And what do parents need to look for in their children for gang activity?
There's a lot of things that parents can look for when they concern about their kids possibly being involved in gang activity. One of the major things, believe it or not, is the change in their behavior. That's number one, becoming defiant. And when I say defiant, defiant not only in the household or rejecting authority or looking down on authority, authority being the parents, authority being the school officials, authority being the police, changing attire, changing attitude, staying out late at night, all of a sudden the change in friends. All of these things in a combination, okay, can be indicators of something is going on with that child. All of them. All of a sudden, you find a child with a lot, a lot of money that you know you didn't give to them. That could be an indicator of something that's going on. So you don't look at one thing by itself, you start looking at these cluster of things. All of a sudden, the change in friends. Friends that they do not want you to meet because knowing your intuition will pick up on there's something going on with these friends. So there's several things. All of a sudden, you start seeing different drawings and markings on notebooks or on their clothes, some of the common gang signs and symbols. But there are some things that parents can quickly pick up on to see that something is going on with their kid that may be indicative of going down that path that you do not want them to go down, which is possibly going to be gang involvement. Before we move on to the next question, Mr. Countryman wants to add on to the last question that was asked.
I just want to say too, that when we think about gangs, I don't want us to to centralize our thoughts into one proximity of our city because we have other gangs that are Islamic gangs in our own city. We have Caucasian gangs in our own cities that are committing violence as well. Throughout the Mesquite County Jail, our intel, intelligence unit, we've identified a hundred, over 168 gangs that have come through the Mesquite County Jail. Now, some of these are hybrid gangs, which means that they can come up with a neighborhood name, but they may associate conduct with a, with a, with Roland Crips or the Crips or the, you know, whatever it is, OMG or Islamic gangs. You know, the White Cross or whatever. So we have a lot of hybrid groups that are out there. But there are situations to where we have young people that are associated with gangs that do not want to be in gangs. So I don't want that when we talk about gangs that it's always a negative thing because we have a lot of kids that come from good neighborhoods that are forced to be in gangs. A lot of the young men that I'm talking to, that they don't want to be there, but they are forced to be there and they're carrying weapons. And they're willing to give up those guns and things like that. But a lot of these young men are just inhaling and don't know how to exhale. And that's why we have to come out and we have to be open with them, transparent with them. We have to nurture them as well because a lot of these young guys, we can turn around. And jail is not the place for them. Having programs in place is what we need to have. We heard Mr. Hickey talk about midnight basketball. We need to have outlets so that our young people can exhale. Again, because a lot of them are in underserved communities to where there's one parent in the house and that parent is working two, three jobs. And so that's where the community comes in and community projects and programs. I just wanted to add that.
Sheriff Countryman, I just also wanted to say, the other part of the question was, can the gun buyback program start again?
Absolutely. I was a part of one of the largest gun buyback programs in Columbus about four or five years ago, myself, Pastor Crocker, Xena Carpenter and her husband was part of that, as well as the NAACP. Yes, it does work. We collected 26 guns. And when we do a gun buyback program, the program needs to be to where we can offer them something for what they turn in. We don't ask questions, we want the guns off of the street. Because when we can get the guns off of the street, then we can sort of reduce the impact of the overall threats that are out there. Gun buyback programs do work if you set it up the right way.
Thank you, Sheriff Countryman. Before we, we're going to allow these three on each side to go ahead and speak. Then we're going to come back to the questions on the cards because everybody's question is important. So we're going to let y'all guys go and get out the way, alternating between each line. And then we're going to come back to the cards. So three on that side, three on this side. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank all of y'all for coming out. I want to thank everybody in the audience for coming out. I said, good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank everybody in the front for coming out and thank everybody in the audience for coming out. I truly believe, I have two separate questions. I guess the mayor, city manager can answer them at first. And the second is for the chief of police. I truly believe that young people are a product of their environment and there are areas of this city due to poverty or whatnot. Some of these areas look like third world countries. And you cannot raise a child to be a productive citizen in some of these areas. It's just not possible. I wonder what the city is doing. I know that there was, you know, the BLIT cleanup that the mayor had done a million dollars, which I think was great. What more is going to be done with that? Because there needs to be a lot more done. If we can catch some of these young people when they're young, maybe we can stop them from being interested in even joining a gang or being associated with a gang. Second of all, there was a story on WTDM and WRBL yesterday regarding targeted killings today at certain areas of the city. And I asked Chief Blackman, what are you all doing about that? And how did that information get leaked to the public in the first place?
Thank you. Yeah, you're exactly right. We have, and as the sheriff had alluded to, I mean, we talk about the fact that there are some, like the young lady was talking about the videos, that these guys and gals are not looking for jobs, they're not looking for opportunities. But there's so many kids that are looking for some kind of support, looking for some kind of affection, looking for some place to belong, that they sort of get sucked into some of these things that they might otherwise not do. And it typically happens in our poorer neighborhoods. It is all over the community, but the most vulnerable are in areas of poverty. Our poverty rate in Columbus is way too high. But there's no one, no one issue, no one thing that is going to affect that. We've talked with the, with the crime prevention, head of crime prevention, we've talked with the chamber, we've talked with the urban league, we've talked with everybody about some of the different things that we need to address to be able to impact poverty. There's about eight different buckets that pour into and draw out of poverty. It's everything from violence to housing, to health, to education. I mean, there's so many things. So what we have done, in addition, I appreciate you bringing up the BLIT attempt. We have been focusing on trying to get rid of some of these housing. There'd been, the city manager can probably correct me, but I think that we put about $50,000 a year towards, towards trying to take down some of these structures. And it doesn't sound like it would have an impact on crime, but when you put a million dollars in one year and then in the middle of a COVID pandemic, council still approved another quarter of a million dollars to start taking down some of those properties. Because not only do they frame a child's mind as they're walking by these things going home, they can't feel good about where they live if they go past three burned out properties. But if we take them down, we also eliminate gathering spots for some of these folks that are doing these crimes. Councilor Barnes and I were talking right before we started. He's been very interested in the health of the community. Retired nurse, very focused on health impact. Forget COVID, let's talk about long-term health impacts going forward. We've been working with an organization, it's a mayor's commission on health and it's got three different prongs that they're working on right now, targeting the very areas you're talking about. Number one is education, the other is eradicating food deserts. So many kids don't have any access to anything other than a bag of chips for breakfast, if that. Now, how can a kid go sit in a school for six hours and learn if they're not getting anything nutritious to eat? On top of trying to eradicate the food deserts, where also we got kind of shut down by COVID, but we're ramping it back up now that we're starting to see our numbers come down, is an outreach program. You can't expect these people who are in poor health and are trying to train up these children to show up even at church to come get something, a screening or something. We've got to go into the neighborhoods. The idea from the very beginning was for us to take a mass pop-up activity into some of our poorer, more violent neighborhoods, taking public safety offers, police officers, put basketball goals, close the street, pull up a big old grill and allow them to use vegetables, show these folks how to prepare vegetables so that they taste good and they also get a little bit more nutrition. Doing screenings so that they know if they've got any chronic issues that are going to maybe cut their life short and leave their child or grandchild to the mercy of the streets or an aunt or uncle that they're sleeping on a couch. We are putting money into programs every day. We just partnered with True Springs. It's an organization and the city manager and I view it as a pilot program. True Springs is a ministry over in East Highland area that they've put a workforce development program together that not only trains people, not only have they created a program that's going to train folks how to do culinary types of activities as well as plumbing, HVAC, contractor work. They've identified folks, they're going to hire them the minute they get that certificate. They're being paid a good wage, I think it's eight or $10, $10 an hour, I think, just to go to school. And they're learning the soft skills, they're learning stuff that they need to know to be able to work in an environment and hold on to a job. City put $100,000 in partnership with that because we think it's something that we can then pick up and take to other areas of the community. Down off Casita Road, people were talking about coming from South Columbus. I lived in, I was born in Columbus, Georgia. I used to run barefoot down Winston Road. I wouldn't go down Winston Road right now without several of these police officers. That's got to change. And it's exactly because of the things you're talking about. We've got programs that we've put in place and people can take advantage of. We're not doing a good enough job of making them aware of the programs that exist.
You've asked, sir, a good question about what South Columbus, many parts of South Columbus look like. And I don't like the look in a lot of parts of our community. And when I say that, it's because I drive those communities. I mean, there's not a single day that I don't drive around Andrews Road. There's not a single day I don't drive down Casita Road, every single day, and Brennan Road. And so I see what's on Casita Road and I don't like it. Weekly, because I live on Steamy Road, I walk out there every day. And I walk up to Shirley Winston, I walk down into Shirley Winston, I see what it looks like. It hurts me when I go down in Shirley Winston on a Saturday morning or Sunday and the amount of trash that I see in our park. But we put it there, that trash. I don't like what I see on Brennan Road. When I go down Brennan Road, I call my enforcement people because they park cars on each side of Brennan Road daily. There's shops over there. I don't like the mobile home parks on Casita Road that are dilapidated and the mounds of tires or trash. In fact, there were mounds of tires right next to the Boys and Girls Club at an apartment unit on Casita Road. And I know we go to Boys and Girls Club every day. Everybody riding up and down Casita Road, nobody calls it in. And I like the fact that Councilor Pop Barnes, we have a program that we do on Saturday. And he calls me or he'll call Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, stand up so they'll see you, Deputy City Manager, so that he can get our quality control person to ride along behind him that he can point out the kinds of stuff that you're talking about so that we can put in work orders and get them out there to clean it up. There's a saying that if you want to see change, you have to be the change you want to see. And as I stand here, I'm calling on my people. I pick up trash along Steamy Road every single day. My wife is here, State Representative Carolyn Huglen. She takes a bag with her in the morning that she can pick up the trash in front of my house. We do that and we have to be a better people. Let's clean up our own neighborhood. I go up to Shirley Winston when there's Little League sports and you park all over the grass and all over the field. And then you wonder why we don't have grass or the grass is not right at Shirley Winston. And so when we talk about violent crime and all of this, you know, sometimes it's, people are reluctant to say because you get accused of... are reluctant to say because you get accused of condemning the victim, but there are more in cultural dysfunctions that we need to address. And when it comes to a lot of this, and the chief has said it all hands on deck, you've heard about a multifaceted approach. It starts with the home, family, your friends, your environment, the church, but city programs. You know, we got to do our part at City Hall. We got to fund programs and services to take care of the needs of the young people. It's going to take the school district, it's going to take churches, too. And the reason I mentioned where I live this morning, I think it's good that people see us in the neighborhood. It's good for them to see the preacher in the neighborhood where he lives or she lives. It's good for them to see their council member in the neighborhood. It's good for them to see the city manager and others in the neighborhood where we live, giving back. And so I'm not making excuses for the city in those areas looking like that, but I'm saying to you, we got to do our part to help take back our neighborhood. And you hear the chief and the sheriff talking about, "Call us." They're giving you hotlines and giving us hotline numbers and text numbers that you can remain anonymous. We got to do that. But I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to sit down. But the mayor mentioned poverty. I Googled poverty rate for blacks in Columbus this morning, and it shows that our poverty rate is 28% amongst blacks in Columbus, Georgia. 28%. And you heard it all today, that when there's poverty like that, we need economic viability, and poverty makes us twice as likely to be incarcerated. Poverty is going to lead to gangs and drugs and homicides and murders, and ultimately incarceration. And then I was looking at some other things this morning, because I was just thinking about coming out here. It shows that more than 70% of the babies born to blacks are unwed mothers. And so you heard me talk about my life story, you know, single female headed household, poverty. I was one of the lucky ones. I have family members weren't so lucky. And so it leads to all those other things. And I say this to say to all of us, the ones who look like me, we got to start taking back our community. We got to go to work. We got to be boots on grounds. We've relied on the black church when we had other challenges in life, and I'm calling on the black church and preachers to let's all get together. It takes a multifaceted approach, and let's try and address some solutions for the problems that we have in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you. We're going to go to the other side, to the gentleman.
So, excuse me, the second part of his question.
Go ahead.
There was concerns regarding the police approach to the information that was communicated on yesterday regarding what was in the news, what was on social media. There was a bulletin, a situational awareness bulletin that was communicated on social media. It was not authorized to be communicated, but I'll take care of that part. But our officers investigated, or still investigating, the threats that have been communicated. None of these threats have been validated to actually indicate that there's any credibility. Nonetheless, we are providing additional police presence in those areas, and we will continue to stay on top of what has been communicated to ensure that those areas, as well as other beats in Columbus, are covered.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to go to the other side. Remember, I see the lines are starting to fill up a little bit. We're still going with the first three. Then we're going to come back to the note cards. If you're still in, I still want to ask your question after that, you will have your two minutes. But we're going to go as we stated before, three on each side, then we'll go to the note cards. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, other city leaders, and congratulations, chief and sheriff. My name is Richard Jesse. Forty-five years ago, I became a community activist in Columbus. Thirty years ago, I was trained as a community organizer. When we organized the Gang Task Force, we began to organize neighborhoods into neighborhood watch program. We organized Carver Heights Against Drugs, and Winterfield on the Move, and the East Columbus Neighborhood Network. And some of us got together and organized the Bellwood Community. We're at a point today where I think we're in a better position to see things change than we have ever. And that's because of what happened a year ago with the pandemic and with George Floyd, and we have the greatest chance of seeing equality really happen in America. I'm the executive director for the Friends of History Club. We have a plan to help restore social order. And I'm hoping in this new, I'm excited about 2021. I just see so much that can happen today. And Mr. Mayor, in the next two weeks, I'm going to come and meet with you about our plans. But I want to say, over the last 50 years, why have we not made any more progress? And one of the main reasons is the way we see each other, Mr. City Manager. We, if we're going to do better, black folk, white folk, we got to see each other differently. We got to stop demonizing each other who are different than us, you know, who think different. There are many people who have plans or things that you're doing. I encourage you to go on. I got my own plan, you understand? But we got to stop talking each other down. And I just want to see us do better. You wonder how we can affect poverty? We would never have an impact on poverty until we pay people a livable wage. These women, sometimes you think these women who don't raise their children just don't care. But if you really look at some of these ladies working two and three jobs, trying to make ends meet, they ain't working. So when we get to the point where we pay people a livable wage, now, I'm a business person. I know the challenge in being able to pay people $15 an hour, because many of us can't do it. But the states that did it on their own, they're doing better. So we need to look at that. I mean, there's so many things we need to do. March 25th, I want y'all to put it on your calendar. We have shut down for a year, the Friends of Claflin, the whole effort. March 25th, my wife and I were diagnosed with pneumonia. We had tested positive for the virus, and thanks be to God, I'm grateful, because we overcame it. We were able to have a full recovery. And I've taken my first vaccine shot. And I want to say to the sheriff, I'm also one of the assistant chaperons at the jail. When I take my second vaccine shot, Mr. Sheriff, some of us need to be able to come back into the jail and talk to, see, you have a captive audience in the jail, and many of them are these people that we are concerned about. And when we talk to them, it makes a difference. When we encourage each other, it makes a difference. The last thing I'm going to say is this. We would have been doing a lot better over these last 50 years, those of us who are visionaries, those of us who have dreams, those of us who have visions, if it were not for the vision killers and the dream assassins. And some of them are in this room right now. Some of them are preachers. Some of them are people who, if it was not their idea, they were voted down. So I just want to say to you, as we move forward, let's encourage each other, be positive, and you'll see how God is waiting for us to do better, and He will help us to do better. March 25th, we're going to be calling for a 90-day fad. And let me just tell you this. When we, God gave us Claflin School.
Excuse me, sir.
It was doing a 90-day fad. Something to go.
Okay.
You know, ladies have more time than men, but anyway.
Hey, thank you, sir. Everybody, just, nothing to disrespect nobody's time, because everybody's time is important here. But we do want to keep everything at two minutes, two minutes, because we got to give them time to answer if you're going to state a question. And then we want to make sure that the people that are behind you are getting the adequate time they need. Two minutes. Thank you.
Yes. I like to, I only got two minutes, so I want to get straight to the point. I like to talk about murders. The murder. My wife's son was murdered, number 39 last year. I talked to a detective when he was killed, and he told me something. He told me the truth, but it hurted, and it still hurted. He said, he talked to, his name, first of all, the detective name is W. Peterson. And he told me that when my son got shot, our son got shot, he talked to nine people, more than nine. They interviewed him. They wouldn't say a word. They wouldn't even cooperate. We got a problem in homicide. We got people that they don't want to talk to, so therefore I have questions. My first question is, 46 homicides was last year. How many was solved? We, but if I want to know about tickets, I see, I see 600 citations, 71 arrests. That's good. They doing their job. But what about homicide? I picked up a lady the other day, her son was shot nine times at Peachtree Mall, never solved. What's up with the solving of homicide? I explained to the detectives, I don't care if the person is a gang member, or he a Christian, Muslim, or Jew, or Trump supporter. The one that pulls the trigger and takes somebody's life committed murder. And this is the problem nobody's talking about. The murders, solving these murders. And if, no disrespect, he didn't put race in it, but if white people come in the community and blacks won't talk to this, how many black detectives we got in homicide? We need more blacks to deal with our people in homicide that solve murders. That we didn't hear from nobody until 12 murders was this year. Then it brought into how many murders God people got to die before we do something about it? And you're right, we do need a tip line. We do need a tip line. We do need a tip line, because they not talking to white homicide detectives. And it ain't their fault. They can't do their job. At least we helped them. They can't do their job. But as black people and law enforcement, you got to get involved. Stop telling us, "We need help from the community. We need help from you. We need documentation." If you don't know how many murders that was solved last year, why you don't know?
All right, noble. Let's give us, answer the question.
Every case that we investigate, we aim to investigate those cases, so we make solid, strong cases for prosecution. We know that there is a street code where individuals, several individuals do not want to provide information. We have, in 2020, we had 42 murders. All of those murders were not solved. But I know in those murders, someone knows the ones that were not solved. Someone knows what occurred. And we really need those individuals to come forward, to share information, so the officers will be able to go forward and develop the cases. If you see, as you have seen recently in the news, we do not stop investigating cases. We've solved three code cases this year. And those cases go far back until the early 2000s, mid 2000s. So we don't stop investigating cases. We will continue to investigate cases and continue to work to solve the cases. I will get the exact number of those unsolved cases, and I will be able to communicate that information. But I want everyone to know that we work every case. Some of our officers work through the off days, when they follow, when they have information to follow up on. So again, I say, we need all hands on deck to provide information. We need to be all in, to share information, so we can help solve cases.
Stand by, Mr. Countryman, when I add on to that.
I just want to thank the gentleman for his passion, but one of the things that we're doing with our tip line, the tip line that we are establishing, we're waiting on the software company to get back with us. If you call the hotline that we have, it will block out us from calling you, because there is a lot of good credible information that we can pass on, that you don't have to worry about us calling you back. You don't have to worry about your name being mentioned. There's too many people in Columbus that know who killed who. I'm hearing the whispers, but we need facts. We are finders of facts. We can solve cases with the Columbus Police Department. We know that there's a trust issue. That's why I'm setting up this hotline, because this hotline benefits you. We don't want to call you back. When we do the gun buyback program, all we want are the guns. We don't want to prosecute you. We just want the guns off the street. So this is an effort for us to try to extend that olive branch out to you. We need the information, because we don't have all the information. That's how we connect one dot to the next, in order to create the nexus for us to prosecute.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to you, sir.
All right. I'm wondering if I can get a two-minute timer, because I got a bunch of rhetorical questions to ask. Okay?
I got you.
I'm going to start now.
Go ahead.
Why do gangs even exist? If we don't know how they exist, how could we dismantle them, right? Are we really, are we really going to act like we don't know the foundation of this country and what it was built on? Do we really think it's a coincidence that certain areas on that map is highlighted in red? Do we really think that's a coincidence? Why, why did the city stop the program that was working to stop the violence, like this man said? Why did that happen? Can anybody answer that? Why is that the schools on the south side are different from the schools on the north side? And they are. I know this for a fact, because I got two kids that go to school on the south side, and I got two kids that go to school on the north side. So what's the difference? Do some of these people still feel like, "Let's let them kill themselves? Let's let them kill each other?" Do some of these people still feel like that, like that man said? Is our armed forces not a giant gang? Is that where we learned this from? Is that where we learned how to go kill and take what we want? If a strong man do stand up like somebody said, will he be lynched? We don't know. Look what happened to George Floyd. Is oppression in certain communities really real? Is it really real? Why is there such a thing as blue collar crimes and white collar crimes? Why do a white man go sell drugs and get two years, and a black man like myself go sell a different drug and get 30? Why is that? Can we see the real statistics? Is black, is black still considered bad in this country? Why was I out walking in my community? I'm a good citizen. I'm a good citizen, I'm an Army veteran. Why was I out walking in my community, and I got the cops called on me, and guns drew down on me? I didn't do nothing, why did that happen? I didn't see it happen to my white neighbors, if we want to be honest. Were the gangs created for people to have a sense of belonging? Because they was just not accepted by a system that constantly reject them? Is that possible? Is the system made for us, or is it made against us?
Time.
How far have we really come against racism? How can, how can the cop show up to a scene with a mental patient, and, and, and this, and this patient is off his meds? How can he, how can he even do anything? What do he even know how to do, okay? Why do the mayor think that eight to ten dollars is good wages? Why is my sister's name not on this list? And when I asked this man, he said, well, we got one of their name on the list, but, uh, but, uh, we don't have the other one, because, because that is the, what did you say? It's the same ca, like how? You said that, that, I'll finish asking my question in a little time.
Actually, that was a misunderstanding regarding the name on the list, and Deputy Chief Graham.
And I just wanted to say, his sister's name is Jerika Spillman, if anybody wants to know.
But we'll, we'll, we'll be able to meet with him and talk to him after this town hall, and be able to give others the opportunity to address their questions. And we'll meet with him after this town hall to address this question.
First of all, thank you all. But I'm going to say this to the mayor, and I said it in public, I said it once before, I said it to the council. I said it during the last mayoral, uh, campaign. Look, this is a Saturday, and look how many people are here. I asked that we have one council meeting, once a quarter, on a Saturday. So you all can talk to your council members. You can't talk to them after you get off work, if you're working two jobs. Now, I'm going to answer to my man's question over there. The realistic reason why we have all of this is it's an economic problem. Until our leaders get serious about south of Columbus, uh, Macon Road, till we get serious about bringing some help to those areas. You can put all the police you want in the area, because gangs are opportunists. How do I know that? Because at thirteen, I was in a gang. I'm here to tell you what a half in here. If I ain't got no money, and I can't get it from my household, I can't get it from my household, and so-and-so down the street got a hundred dollars, and he got a nice car, guess where I'm going? Let's be real. Let's not fool ourselves. So I asked the mayor, you don't have to answer the question, but until we are serious about putting money on the south side, you will continue to have the problem, because it's a generational curse. It's a generational curse. It keeps going and going. You can clean up the gangs today. Two years from now, that little brother is going to join the game. I'm telling you what I seen, not what I heard, I'm telling you what I know. You have got to get serious. We can talk all day, but until we get serious about putting money on the south side, money, job, career, not even jobs, career, till we get serious. Don't close down a pool. I don't care what you got to do, find the money. Find the funds. Until we get serious about bringing those programs back for those after-school kids, you're going to continue to have a problem. Thank you.
You step on up, ma'am. After the, after this young lady right here, we're going to go to the cards.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, Jennifer Lee Denny, I'm a community advocate on many fronts. Um, some of y'all have seen me before on different things. I am a South Side resident, I'm a former city employee. To count, um, to piggyback on what he said, I am so sorry, Representative Smire, but it begins with the state also answering emails. I've sent emails to Smire and Senator Harbison on other issues that deal with funding. So we need to hold them accountable as well. Our funds also come from state, not just city, y'all. Um, one of the things I wanted to address is, what are we doing to refresh the Neighborhood Watch Program? I put something out there on our favorite drama page, concerned citizens, got one response, one. That's a problem. That is supposed to be a way for citizens to get engaged, to be smart about how to look out for things, to be educated. Education is key to getting some of this resolved. Another thing, as a former nine-one-one dispatcher, we need to educate our citizens on how to use our city services. Remember when we used to have those infomercials you did, Mayor? We need to teach our citizens, when do we call for speeders? When do we call for shots fired? How are we supposed to engage with nine-one-one? Not just call in a panic, not get upset when we ask for descriptions. And I understand, yeah, I'd be pissed off, excuse my French, if someone asked me, well, what does the person look like? I had to fight with the caller, say, well, you know what? We didn't get to your person that was passed out, because no one told us it was a black male. There was a white male passed out further up the street. We thought it was him, same clothing. He almost didn't make it to the hospital. There's a reason why we ask for descriptions. I'm asking as a white ally, let us help as well. We have to do this together. We can't just do it single-handedly. I live in Oakland Park, and I'm here for Pastor Powell as well. He told me to let you know that Oakland Park Community Association is fully invested in whatever you want to do. Because we need to get a handle on this. Thank you.
She was the third person, but she wants to ask your question.
Mine's not so much of a question, but, um, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate all of you guys that are here. Um, I appreciate our, our mayor, who, before he even took office, met with me. Uh, John House, who comes on Winston Road and attend my meeting. Pop, who always pick up with the phone when I call, and so, also is Bruce. So I do want to give credit to our officials. I have been, my husband went into Winston Road twenty-some years ago, only to be a help. And most of you know I didn't go to the city for anything. We pulled out of the resources that, that we had, and we, uh, provided feeding programs, which we were feeding over a hundred children and adults daily for ten years, up until the COVID. We also provided GED classes and all kinds of things. I went to the city myself, and I, you guys worked with me. And I, I came up with a lot of things that would help. I always said from day one, that every community has its own DNA. What will work for this community may not work for the other one. But I didn't know that Winston Road is a community that do not share. I have been on the scene right after some shooting, and no one talks. And I don't blame them for that. I understand later on why, what happens, because I went and had a cleaning, uh, initiative, where we went out and cleaned the community. And they were so mad, that they literally called out my home address. That was not something that I thought was, was known. The very next day, they pulled out trash and put it back. They did not appreciate the help that we provided. Although I own property on Winston Road, we have a church on Winston Road. I have two actually, uh, modulars that we use for the youth and for the, uh, young adults and all of that, that they can use at any point. We do programs all the time over there. But they did not want the help of cleaning up that community. I also brought out that a lot of these homes are abandoned homes, and therefore, they were selling drugs out of it. Yeah, we had some arrests, but drugs is a family business. So within thirty days, it's back in operation, probably before that, because the child took over, while you arrested the father. I stated from the beginning that we have to start at the bottom. Put these people back to work as soon as they are out of jail. When you have a fella, you done your time. We should not put that over anybody's head. If they do another, and they go back to jail, come out and able to work and maintain and be able to take care of their family. If I can't take care of my family, can't feed my young children, I don't know what I would do. I thank God that I'm able to do that. But I watch these people, I, I call companies day and night, trying to get people to work. And we say that there are companies out there that, that will hire. Well, you let me know, and I called the list I was given. That is not true. They say we got enough, this and that, so what are they going to do? The next thing I know, they have, uh, barred me out of their lives, gone back to doing what they want to do. I think as, and I'm going to stop, I think as a community, come together, I felt I was threatened. And I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the cameras here. I was threatened, my life was threatened, because of the simple fact that they said I brought in, uh, the policemen, so people was arrested. So I pushed back, my husband passed, so, excuse me a minute. So I was alone. So I think that we need to come together. Should've said that. Come together and work together. When you see people out there working, I hurt you, Mayor. I don't blame you. When you met with me, I said, don't come to Winston Road, I'll meet you at Burger King, ain't that right? I didn't want you to put your life in, in danger. But I'm saying that this is that we have to, when you see people working, come together with them. They are going through a lot, trying to make a community different and healthy. And now, Winston Road is to a point where when I look at it, I just throw my hands down. I don't know what would be able to help it, but I hear Byron. Byron had a lot of great ideas that I thought about. Those type of things need to be implemented, and I can see where it can be universal, it can work in all the communities. You got to start at the gra, you can arrest them all you want to, but you're going to need other jails, because they're going to come back up and survive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Going to the reading of the cards.
Gladys Ford did not have a question, she had a, a comment about economic development.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Gladys Ford, and, uh, from transplant to Columbus, but, uh, been here for a very long time, in and out of the city. Uh, I have concerns that are economic. I have seen Columbus grow, but it has grown away by design from the south side. We have very few businesses, we have a lot of services that have been moved away from the people in this part of the city. Um, the banks, we got one major bank, from major, uh, from Macon Road to Victory Drive, at C V N T, at San Obis. Medical services are being moved away from us. Where's the health department now? Up on Bedford's Parkway. How can our people get to Bedford's Parkway? I, I don't know. But it's being moved from a central location to a very far northern location. Uh, we have a lot of blighted areas in our community. Uh, I know there are funds out there, that can be accessed, but who knows about them? I've sat on several committees, and I see monies being, um, allocated to programs that are not very much help to our communities. And unless you got somebody sitting on those committees who are vocal and have a real concern about what goes on in our community, we don't get any of that money. It goes to other programs that are less beneficial to us. Environmental services, you're just talking about the trash and all of that. And yes, we can help, but I also observe our, uh, tra, uh, uh, trash service, picking up trash, leaving half of it on the street. They don't do that over in Brookstone. Uh, things that are not picked up for months. On Samuel Road, there's some trees that were cut down by the, the residents, and it's, there's some of it is still there, set there for several months before anything was done about it. Uh, these are some concerns that I have. And where's the Chamber of Commerce today? Where's the Better Business Bureau? Why aren't these service, uh, entities involved in our community meetings? How, how do they get information out to our communities? So that people are know what kind of monies are available. Um, there are people who would like to start businesses. They get very little assistance from the city, from the business community, and I know from personal experience, you don't get the same cooperation from the banks and other financial institutions in this city that they give to people of other persuasions. Um, I, uh, would like to see more involvement and cooperation, programs that are training parents. We talk about parents being involved or not involved. Well, we got babies having babies. And, and those parents need to be worked with. They need to be worked with through the schools, through the churches, and every other, uh, entity that we have in place. And finally, um, where are our welcome signs to Columbus? It concerns me that you be in Columbus and you hardly know it. I travel in other states and other cities. Uh, welcome to Timbuktu, home of the nineteen eighty-nine, um, basketball champions, state champions. We had several championships, uh, won by students, uh, schools in this community. I didn't see the first sign go up. I saw very little done to, uh, uh, celebrate those students who worked very hard to accomplish, accomplish what they did. And unless we celebrate these young people, they're going to do just what they're doing, they leave. And they don't come back. But we, we need to celebrate who we are. And we don't have any signs. I come in on Macon Road, there's a little old sign say, uh, Columbus, Georgia, uh, Muskogee County, that you hardly notice when you go across one of the bridges. But I see them everywhere else that I go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I know the city manager wants to add some to this as well, because, uh, I'm going to try to touch on a couple of those things. One, putting money in South Columbus, I, I agree. It's been a, a focus, I think, for the city to try to do what we can do from a governmental aspect, to attract businesses there. There's been almost three hundred million dollars, I think, invested in infrastructure in South Columbus. Uh, we, we've done those strategically, and they're designed to open up thoroughfares so that businesses will find locating there more attractive, because you'll be able to generate more consistent traffic through that area. The interchange at Casita Road, the, uh, the spider web, uh, the roundabouts and realigning Brennan and, and Fort Benning Road, the, the streetscaping that's taking place out there, and it is having some impact. Because we're hearing from some of the housing developers, uh, that they're putting, uh, some developments in areas of town that they have never looked at before. Far, uh, not Far Road, I'm sorry, Brennan Road. Uh, they're looking at Far Road, I think, Neighbor Works is looking at a, a, an area out there. We've got a new development planned through Neighbor Works out off Victory Drive, that's going to be centered around an activity center. So we are, and we are also, I mentioned Gerald Mitchell. Uh, if you haven't met Gerald, Gerald is the new CEO, uh, of the Columbus Chamber. First African-American, uh, CEO of Columbus, of, of the Columbus Chamber. Uh, he has got some outstanding ideas. He and I actually had a chance to spend about two days together a week ago. He's very focused on minority-owned businesses and finding a way to erase the stigma of the chamber as being just for large businesses. He recognizes and understands, he, he came from Atlanta, uh, where he had helped to shape the Belt Line, which is a, a very diverse, uh, commercial strip that is, he, he just did an amazing job. He's an awesome guy. I think you're going to see some results in the area of, of women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. Uh, so, so we continue to try to hit the signs, it's something else I remember. I actually had a, a, a parent from, um, a school on the north side, uh, call me complaining about not having signs. And we checked, and I can't tell you the locations, but I know, for example, Carver had five signs placed throughout the community at the entrance welcoming people. Because we had the parade for Carver, that was a pretty unique deal, where the boys and girls basketball team went on the same floor over the same weekend. Uh, and we do try to recognize these kids, we bring them up before council, we do place signs. We need a more, uh, and the city manager and I have talked about this, we need a more comprehensive approach to it. Because we need to be able to recognize kids on the debate team state championship, just like we do the kids that win a state championship in basketball. So we need to have some kind of process where we have almost like an add a sign. City manager said a- City manager said a half dozen times, we need to trumpet our community. We need, as you point out, to make a statement. So we are working with DOT on some of the signage for the young people and their accomplishments. But we also need to look at putting some bigger signs up there to let folks know. I tell him all the time, it gripes me. Because when I come from Atlanta, and if I'm coming back through Atlanta, say from out towards Augusta, when I hit Atlanta, I'll see a sign that says, "To Birmingham." And I'm like, you're kidding me. Columbus, Georgia is the largest city that you're gonna hit first? And it just doesn't have it on there. So it goes back to the business adage of we have to tell our story. And if we don't tell it, other people will, and it won't be a good story.
Let me just mention, I know that Ms. Ford mentioned a number of things, but I feel compelled to highlight one thing that I want to make crystal clear. As an African-American city manager who lives on the South Side, as an African-American city manager who lived on the South Side, I am the chief operating officer of Columbus, Georgia. And no program, no money gets spent unless it comes through my office. And all operations and those people on, who are controlling those operations, I want Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin to stand up again. Now, when you talk about mowing grass and collecting garbage and anything related to public works, that's the Deputy City Manager that the department head reports to. Any and everything, mowing grass, any city vehicle, any of that, it has to come through her. And I want you to know that anything related to parks and recreation goes through her. She has that power. Those people report to her. If they need a piece of equipment, if they want to go out of town, if they want to do a program, a service, they gotta talk to her. Parks and Rec or Public Works. They need a garbage truck, they gotta talk to her. She's not just a figurehead. And I'm not just a figurehead. And I say all that to get to the point. That if you find that someone is mowing grass in Brookstone and won't mow it on Steamwell Road, that's a problem for me. I can fix it. Because they're gonna do what I require them to do. I want to be clear. I'm not just a figurehead. She's not just a figurehead. And if you call me, I'm gonna call her, and she's gonna fix the problem. So I don't want anyone to leave here, or anyone in Columbus, Georgia to think that an African-American city manager and a deputy city manager who reports to me, who controls all of that, would allow someone to mow grass on one side of town and not mow it on the side of town where I live and where she lives. That can't work for me if that happens. So be clear about that. So when you hear that out in the streets, shake your head. And if you see it and it's happening and it's for real, call her or call me, we'll fix it. I just want to be clear about that. And I often hear that, "Well, they'll mow it over here, but they don't do it over here. They pick up over here and they won't pick up." Now, if you put, I live on Steamwell Road, drive it every day. Those big old trees that you have seen on Steamwell Road, we don't pick that up. We have a tree for feet. And you call us and we'll pick it up. And you'll see orange paint sprayed on those. And we are giving them a warning, and we're gonna take them to court if they don't clean it up. And so if you see that big, huge tree out there on the right of way that they paid someone to cut down, or they cut it down themselves and they left it out there, we don't pick that up. We will if there's a tree for feet. But I tell my wife all the time about her. If you want to get fired, play with her. Play with her. She will fire you if you don't get it right. And so I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you, City Manager. And thank you Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. She was actually instrumental in helping me, her and City Manager Isaiah Hewley in putting this together today. So I thank both of them for their help. Ms. Ford, thank you for your question. And I wanna, I wanna just tell you all that we have a 311 app. So, and I'm gonna pass, get one of the ladies to pass them out. But when you see things like that, you can do a request, a service request through our 311 app. And also, as the city manager mentioned about our public service, when it's, on March 6th, we will have an event, a citywide cleanup event. So not only will we be able to see something and say something, but we will be able to get out and actually clean up. So we'll be able to clean up our neighborhoods. You can contact your city manager, the city manager, your city council member, your representative, and sign up to volunteer to pick up the litter. And let's really focus on making our communities better, each and every one of us. So that's number one. And number two, just please, 311, if you have an issue, put it in. You know, that's the, we create tools for the citizens of Columbus. That way, it's easy for you to actually, if you see something, you can put it in and you can help us because you're our eyes and our ears in the city. So this is crime prevention, you know, and also taking care of your own areas.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know, we're pushing for 2:30, so we have roughly about 30 minutes left. About 30 minutes left to get these questions in and answered. What time? About 15 minutes? Okay, about 15. Ms. Tucker, still 2:30?
What I can probably do, like these questions, they're mostly, these are mostly statements that I have. And I will just go ahead and ask the two that I'm gonna ask. One is about a tattoo parlor, I think it was Kathy Caldwell. I didn't know how to ask it, so I'm gonna have her ask this question, then the other ones are just like...
So before you answer the question, Ms. Tucker, we're gonna, 2:30, we're gonna give about 14 minutes.
So what I'm, what I'm gonna say, and I'm trying to keep this, what I'm gonna say, you all, we know we can be in here till 5 o'clock asking questions. And I might have to do another, it might have to be a quarterly. I can't remember, I think it was Mr. Broadwater that made a comment that maybe we need to have this on a quarterly basis, especially if we have this amount of people here. So we're gonna read the ones that's on the card. You all there are standing up, I apologize, we probably won't be able to get to you. However, we will, if you have a question, write it down, and we can talk to you off to the side.
Thank you.
Look at this Kathy, I have something positive to say about the police officer and the detective and so forth. Okay, my son got killed in 2001. As me being a parent, working with the police department, the detective department, January 25th, he lost his life. I worked with the victim witness and so forth, and the detective very closely, and the police department, they only could do their investigation. But by me working with them on a positive, working side by side with them and working with the ones that my son was involved in, someone else saying about your children, know who your children are working with and being with and so forth, I was able to track down the perpetrator who took my son's life. And obviously, that same year, 2000, that young man was convicted and so forth. But I do want to say, you know, everyone did their job. You know, me as being a parent, I had to do my job also, working with them, being patient, or being in court and all them different things, and talking to the young men and so forth. And the young man and I became real close, you know, I rode him while he was in prison. When he got out of prison, we were able to obtain him a job. Thank God to, for the place out on the north side of town. He was a convicted felon, but we were able to obtain employment and so forth. By being a positive force and so forth, working with the police department, and once they get out, they have to have something to do. I totally agree. Convicted felon, you don't want to have him on places like McDonald's and Waffle House and places like that. But I do want to say something positive. Thank God for the police department and you all in your positions downtown. You can only do so much. And we as parents and neighbors and so forth, talk with our children. They'll open up to you. Talk, make friends with them. Don't become their enemy because you just say, "Oh, so-and-so killed my child." Get with them individuals and so forth. They'll talk, and they have, you know, we get angry in the spur of a moment. And then if something makes something, oh, it can be resolved. You know, even though they might have to serve time, but still, work with all you. And with the tattoos, your child come home with a tattoo, find out. You know, you purchasing, getting their money to purchase a tattoo with a tat, with the gang sign, that's a sign there. That's a warning for their parent. Oh, something going on with my child. Talk with your child or get with a detective, someone that you trust. That, you know, open up with your son. Because normally, you don't have that many women committing crimes, but anyway. But do that. And I found out that'd be a positive force, and having me to go on with my life with the death of my son. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You got some more questions on your card?
Right here in the front? Okay, I got it. Do we have any solutions to help with the reckless behavior and shooting that occurred in Carver Park?
As I stated previously, we track our hotspots for various activities that have occurred. Criminal behavior, aggravated assaults and other crimes that occur. We track those and we assign officers to those areas as we work to prevent those incidents from repeating themselves. So that's, our strategy is to, is to do that on one side, as far as assigning officers in those areas. But in addition to that, we have crime prevention programs in place where we work with the younger ones in the schools, in the elementary schools, to encourage them, encourage them and give them direction to go, in hopes that they would take a positive direction to go in life and not take part in violent criminal behavior. So when we look at fighting crime, it's multifaceted, as was stated earlier by City Manager. And it takes all of us. But from the law enforcement perspective, we will assign officers to areas to address the hotspots, and we will work with our younger ones, and we do work with our younger ones to try to steer them in a positive direction. And also, in 2020, we had four to two murders, as I stated earlier, which 23 of those were solved. And we really appreciate the support from our citizens as they share the information with us. And for those remaining cases that are unsolved, please share that information because these families need to have that individual or those individuals brought to justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask, answer. Deandra, I've been working with you for a while with the issues that we've had in Carver Park and our City Manager Isaiah Hewley and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin help secure funding. So we're gonna put up some gates. And a matter of fact, right now, they're actually being installed. And that will decrease the amount of traffic because when the park is closed, there will not be any traffic. And what was occurring was after hours at dark, at nighttime, there were shootings in the park. And I know that's like right behind, you know, your property. So that's number one. And number two, the cameras that are in the Recreation Center can be linked up with the East Precinct. So that's another thing that, you know, we basically discovered when we went out and did a site survey, and actually myself, and City Councilor John House went out there and did a walk-through, in a drive-through of Carver Park back in October. So these things are actually being done. The gates, I think, have already been, they have already been put up. So those are things that will deter and decrease that gun violence in that area.
Exactly. And we, from the law enforcement, the police department, we have cameras that we are gonna develop even more throughout our city. And we're doing even more 21st century style of policing to address some of these areas from the video technology perspective.
And I just want to say very quickly that we are gonna be placing cameras in hotspots where there's illegal dumping going on. And so Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin is working on that. And we're gonna catch those who are dumping, you know, like Fair Oaks drive popcorns. You know, I'm sick and tired of it. We go through and clean up Fair Oaks, and two days later, it's trashed up again. We went to one site where the mirror called us, and there were 23 mattresses and 200 and something tires dumped at a location. And we go back the next week, and it's back the same way. We're gonna catch you, and we're gonna bring you to justice. Take that message to somebody, because we're gonna get you. Thank you.
We're gonna combine these two questions. One is, can we bring some of the gang members together for a sit-down, to assemble, and try to bring them to a peaceful understanding with one another? And the other one is, do we have a unit to suppress street drugs?
What's the second part of that question?
Do we have a unit to suppress street drugs?
Okay. As far as the gang members, bringing them together, Sheriff and I, the sheriff and I have met with some individuals who are connected with these gangs. And we are looking to develop even more information as we interact with them, as we work to suppress, decrease, and eliminate this gang activity that's taking place. And we do have units that are on the streets working to suppress drugs as well as gang activity from taking place. So we do have units already on the streets that's doing that.
What can be done about the drug houses in the cul-de-sac behind the Church of Christ on Casita Road?
Behind the Church of Christ on Casita Road? We have, like I said earlier, we have a drug unit that addresses these drug complaints. So as we receive complaint information, we will investigate those locations and determine the best approach as from a law enforcement perspective to make a case. And so when we receive a complaint, we work it from an angle that will give us the best opportunity to make a solid case for a conviction. We just don't get the information and go there the next day with a search warrant. We have to meticulously work the case and develop a very solid case for prosecution. So we will definitely pass that information on to our drug unit to ensure that they add that particular location to their list. And we'll work to get the results.
I'd just say something really quickly. That has nothing to do with me, but I have called CPD before because someone called me. And like you, I expect them to run out there and catch them while it's hot. Well, that's not how they do their work. And so, you know, and I'm like, well, why didn't they just go get them right now? And they are sitting back, not getting overly excited about it. And then, it may be six months from that, they're calling in and say, "We got them." But, you know, they're doing their work. So when you report something like that, whoever that question came from, if they don't go get them right then, that doesn't mean they've ignored it and they're not working. it and they're not working you know and and I've just learned to be uh a bit patient because they know what they're doing they know how to work it that's what they've trained they're trained to do and so don't get discouraged because you called it in today and you expected them to go out there at midnight tonight and and rush the house and and they they heard you and they're working.
If I can add too is uh echo what the uh city manager is saying that I keep saying that we need credible information because whether if you give it to the police department or the sheriff's office if you give it to the sheriff's office and if we work it and as the city manager said everything doesn't happen overnight because sometimes if we're sitting up watching watching a dwelling we may see somebody else that's connected to something else and so if we can um gather more information that case turns into something that will evolve into something bigger to where we can take down bigger fish in the community but if you give us information just in January through the collaboration of us working with federal resources we've tracked down things that have touched our community that were dangerous we tracked down six people that was wanted for murder six people that were wanted for murder now two came from Muskogee County but if they had any connection close to Muskogee County we tracked them down and we went to go and get them if you give us the information and I brag on our special response team they are highly trained that we will go into places and we do search warrants all the time that's what we do if you give us the information we're gonna work it and we're gonna work it until the wheels fall off of it because we want these folks just like you want them off of the street we want a safer city and we are going to take back our community that's the attitude that we have now by all means thank you.
Thank you sheriff.
I'm gonna combine these two cards so it says what specific programs are in the schools right now in efforts to curtail violence in the community what happened to dare and great programs and the other card says it seems that a great deal of issues originate in our schools could you please consider having a conversation with students parents and teachers of schools that are identified as challenging schools?
Can you repeat your second part please?
It says it seems that a great deal of issues originate in our school could we please consider having conversation with students parents and teachers of schools that are identified as challenging schools?
So as I stated earlier we have officers that interact in our school system of course because of our pandemic that we are experiencing we cannot do it full scale like we want to but nonetheless we are in the schools and we are interacting with the students to show them the direction to go with teaching them some very solid principles that are dare related principles uh the dare program when the Muskogee County school system developed their police department the uh our chief at that time removed our officers from conducting the dare program but we have not abandoned teaching those dare principles to the students because we still go to the schools and we still interact with students and so even from the the great program as was stated earlier that particular concept as far as that particular unit we are working to continue to go into our middle schools but like I said we have to cautiously approach going into the schools so we can't do it full scale because we've done summer camps with dare to be great camps and we look to continue those programs but we just have to be cautious in our approach presently but we still interact with students and we will continue to interact with students to teach them.
This is my final question I have are any of these activities related to the Boogaloo Boys or outside agitators? Are any of these activities related to the Boogaloo Boys or outside agitators?
There's no uh evidence that anything when you make when you refer to activity if you're talking about the shootings that that's been regularly occurring there's no evidence there's nothing that supports that is not anything that's involving Boogaloo or anything anyone from outside of Columbus there's none of that evidence that indicates that so to answer that question I would say no that as best right now is is a problem that's occurring in Columbus and it's more likely dealing with individuals that is in the neighborhoods in Columbus so there's no evidence of any outside agitators or uh Boogaloo as you referred as you made reference to.
Before we end um I have a question that says could we have direct phone numbers um so that one can get in contact with our leaders I know that our columbus georgia.org um website we have I want to make sure I think it's good. Okay but all of our our phone numbers are on there our email addresses um I know my constituents have my number and they call me and I answer and I address the issues so I don't think that exactly so that three one one card that you that you have you can call three one one and they will direct you to whoever it is that you want to speak to whatever counselor or the city manager or whoever whatever director that you need to speak to it you can get in contact with all your city leaders so to that question you do have direct uh direct line of communication with your city leaders.
That includes the police chief as well you can dial three one one to connect to the police department or six seven zero six six five three thirty-one hundred repeating seven zero six six five three thirty-one hundred is the number to contact me at the police department.
And I'll go ahead and give you the mayor's office right now the direct line there is seven oh six two two five four seven one two and you ought to be able to get somebody in my office and I and before I get out of here I want to remember I answered one question the gentleman back here that was asking about the eight to ten dollar wage frankly that eight to ten dollars was being paid to those individuals while they were in school they actually were graduating from that into pre-arranged uh jobs that were gonna earn between fifty and seventy thousand so so that was just while they were learning and while they were in the school that's a program the church is running thank you sir.
And also if I can leave my number uh for the sheriff's office is seven zero six two two five four two two five thank you.
And um you can call me of course certainly you can get me through three one one and three one one also uh those people report to deputy city manager Goodwin you can get her you can get me through three one one or you can dial seven zero six six five three four zero two nine you can see she has a lot of responsibility.
And if you want to pass on information that may be gang related and you don't want to leave your name uh the number that you can do that at is uh seven zero six two two five forty-four seventy-one and just leave the information there uh just briefly state why you're calling and we'll follow up on it that in regards to that I'm making reference to uh gang tagging that you want to come out and take a look at and and analyze that gang tagging or just bits and pieces of information that you may have received from a child that's in your family whether it's um your child your your grandson your granddaughter a cousin a nephew or niece just leave the information on that on that line and uh we'll follow up on it and take a look at that information and factor it into what we may be suspecting at that time maybe gang related information thank you.
And my and I'm I'm district four so if you're district four this is my number is seven oh six two two five nine seven eight three and that's seven oh six two two five nine seven eight three.
As we get ready to to conclude as we get ready to conclude um we're gonna have the pastor come up minister come up minister Steve Thomas I want to leave you one thing for three years of my correctional career I served as the unit manager in the state of Oklahoma Oklahoma is to California as Washington DC and New York is to south to the south that means that all the gang activity all the things the culture comes from California while out there I was on our sixth gen that means sixth generation of gang members alright I was meeting grandfathers and uncles and things of that nature who were in who established these gangs in California and moved into Oklahoma here in Columbus we're on like our third generation alright because our gang started hitting in the mid nine early nineties late eighties so we're in a good place to get control of this stuff we're in a great place to get control because we we're not too far gone we're not too far gone alright one of the major things that I would as I said with these gangs because I I managed more than four hundred eighty different gang members alright from some of the things that they were speaking about um these gangs that affiliated they're called love sets that means they have love for this specific game alright you have to be aware of those type people they may not be they might just be that street that you stay on but who who are they showing homage to who are they loving alright who are they supporting another thing is that as you look around the room as you look around the room one of the biggest things that I used to hear I would hear talking to these guys was if I had somebody like you if I had somebody like you I wouldn't be here now the problem is that a lot of times what we say is that they don't want to they don't listen they don't listen to us they don't understand us somebody understood you we weren't all sitting right here at one time everybody wasn't a sheriff everybody wasn't a chief of police everybody they have on a shirt and tie everybody wasn't blessed to be um with a silver spoon somebody had to tell us something because at a point in our life our parents told us we can't tell you nothing but you made it through the seed had to be planted right the Bible says in Romans twenty-two and six says raise up a child in which way he should go in when he is grown he shall not depart from it it doesn't say when he's eighteen it doesn't say when he's nineteen it doesn't say when he gets a job paying thirty thousand dollars it doesn't say when he gets when he has his first kid it says when he is grown alright so please keep investing in your kids keep investing in the kids that are around you come out of retirement come out of retirement and visit some of these schools come out of retirement and visit some of these boys and girls clubs say something to the kids that are on your street talk to them just say hey let them know you care because some of these kids are walking out of household where parents don't care where parents don't say have a great day at school alright they don't tell you I love you but if you stand on that corner and just say hey y'all that's more than that they had coming out the house and they gonna look for it the next day so they may not do something to get in trouble because they want to see your face again it's about planting that seed and I promise you I said I I have guys right now I work with I haven't I've been away from the department of juvenile justice and corrections since two thousand nineteen since two thousand nineteen I left Oklahoma in two thousand eighteen and I connected I know people who run stuff but it's the seed that was planted while they was in there the seed that was planted while they was in there that they came out and made a change and we still have opportunities to make changes I state my parents I was raised off steam in road I was raised in East Columbus I was raised in Benny Hills right I had all the opportunities to do everything that everybody else did and didn't want to do and did some of them but it's the seed that was planted that changed everything that's the seed that made this my brother right here with this omega jacket on to say I'm not finna be a gang member no more they probably couldn't tell him at thirteen but look at him now it's the seed that was planted so please come out of retirement because it just takes one of us to stop one of them that won't make no more it's just like the grimace drop some water on them they multiply but if you feed them and treat them right they won't multiply in that number alright so I just leave y'all with that before I turn them to the pastor please come out of retirement reach out to these kids reach out to these kids it takes a village that is not a fake statement statement it takes a village to raise them because everything like my man said everybody they're not gonna tell everybody everything it takes that person that has that understanding that they're gonna tell it to and then we can move forward and get the information that we need to solve these crimes to stop these crimes to stop these gangs from moving forward it's possible family it's possible East Columbus we can do it.
Someone said something about fasting at a certain time and someone had a question about that they want to know when that when that was gonna be he left okay alright and then also is there a reward for leads um any kind of leads that you guys get is there a reward for that someone had a question about that for lead or tips I'm sorry for tips.
Regarding tips crime stoppers money funds are available for tips that are submitted of course when you call that number you will be given a number and you refer back to that number when uh in order to receive the funds for the reward for the information that you provide that leads to an arrest.
Something about what I talked about earlier um uh can we have an initiative to cover up these uh these graffiti and things like that I think it might be important I do think they stir up feelings and to leave them there and people come in and I just I would like to see them um removed now I guess I could go up there to that building and paint those black letters white but I I think it's um more than that one building I think it needs to be something that is addressed I it looks like it could be something and that's the thing about these killings they seem to come from out of nowhere and um they might not be. Okay.
Well I I was just gonna say please I want you to use the number three one one and you call and report that building has graffiti and and they'll request that our people special enforcement go out and take a look we don't know that we have jurisdiction over a private building if it's on a park or facility or on right of way we can take care of that but at least if you report it we will send our people out to go and talk to the building owner the property owner. Well if if that's a whole I'll talk to you afterwards if you want to but if you report it my point is we'll at least send special enforcement out to talk to them.
Amen.
Let me say something real quick it ain't about no tip how much money you get our kids out here dying if you asking for a tip or money or anything y'all be shaming yourself I've been in these streets and I work in these streets it's time to help each other we got older people falling on the ground for hearing bullet shot with millions around our city that's the problem we got and we out here to help y'all we out here to help each other a lot of people should be here more people should be here and listen what going on it's time to stop this killing in our street if you ain't with it get out of it. You got to be with this young. I feel for my old people like this this older lady came up here early it brought brought to my heart to listen to her saying about this gunshot gunshot people getting killed black people in prison it's about all of us who see me now who care about something parents don't bag off your kid when they they listen to other kids say something to their mama down the street and they want to come back to your house to say the same thing to you so don't bag up go forward to them you had them mom you have them y'all caring nine months the thing I want to hear our women our men stop doing is letting each other down about talking about each other and you growing kids up if he call you a bee he letting you down in front of your kid if you call him unfair father you letting him down from the kid y'all need to come towards each other. Y'all need to come towards each other and start talking about this stuff in them behind door, not in front of your kid. Cause when they grow up, they gonna have it in their heart. And when you try to tell them something, they not gonna listen cause you did it. That's all I gotta say. They say, "I went black to a camp and fathers, we walk in the street, we having a meeting, wagon, sending a fly out and dang." We gonna, we gonna walk this street. We gonna walk this street. We guard faith. We gonna walk this street. We got a shield over us. I'm not scared. I've been in prison. I'm getting back to the street. What I done in the street, you might think, "Country locked me up." You know what I'm saying? Somebody did. He ain't do nothing wrong. They take me down, I had to pay my price. And I can give back. We all of us in this room, we get fitted together. They know who got this logo, who got that logo, who got this logo. Yeah, all our logos got to come together and we gotta stand firm. Each and every last one of us. So let's walk together. Your kids is my kid, my kids is your kid. Let's get it back like this some together. Cause back in the days, our parents was the police in our neighborhood. They was the police in our neighborhood. They tell you when to go home and, you better not gonna tell your mama some, some whoopie's gonna get another. So let's get that back. Let's get that back. Each and every last one of y'all.
Yes, Lord.
When I found my grandson last week with Tooty's help, and I didn't even know who he was until this happened. I knew he was in the gang. I knew he was out there in the street. I couldn't think mama didn't make it. But I didn't know that side, you know? And I found out when he got dead, they was ready to take over everything, pay for everything. So we didn't have to pay for nothing. Of course, me being a Christian, I understand that. Who are these people? Wanna do all this to, do all that. But because when he could make it at home, so we, everybody talking about money. I agree. America, that's America, money. It, it, the gangs throughout America, not just when he toured and they're killing each other around here. But we as Ron and Paul Mount, it's the us, not the others. Not the world. It's the us. I didn't know that about him. Everybody else in my family, I just asked, "What you doing out there?" Cause to be honest, he was my best friend out of all of my family. He, he, me and him were the closest, but he, he gonna let me step aside of him, cause he respected me that much. But the other folks who knew what he was doing, if they had've told me, I said, "Now, what kinda drugs is he selling?" He ain't on drugs. What is going on? But at the end of the day, I had to go on Facebook after the news reports he would put leads. That's when I saw this gang, so to speak. And what I saw was horrific. I can't even go back and do that, cause that's a whole nother person that I know. So what I thought, just money about us as people, as human beings, we done lost ourselves around here, who we are. Our children, we people who had to pour something drunk, like he was saying. We got to really get to, first of all, we have to start paying on each other and, and not telling each other what's going on. Y'all saying for us to tell y'all something, we need to talk to each other. And our families, the family just broke down. It ain't where they used to be. So the gangs pick up, well, he dropped a bomb. And they told them, well, they got them, he had money, 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 money. I didn't even know that. When he came down there looking broke, but kinda sign high. He was up there, paid. And when he died, they let us know he was, he was somebody now. Like we got this, we're, we're. So I'm just saying, we gotta bring real for this. We can't get the little size. We can't make it be about work and everything. But that's just America messed up here, in there now. Injustice and ineptitude. But as for our children, we got to get back to love, humanity, business. And stop wasting our lives before us because of them. Like I live here in Columbus, I never had to go to another city. I can make my own life here. I got to create equal justice and sustain progress. And have a bad self. So that's why he did that. He was proud of his own way. He was small, but he, but he dead.
Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Everybody has a story. I wanna thank each and every one of you guys, just take that moment just to say that from our own perspective of King and Baptist Church, to bring a, unify a body of people together to discuss the situation. On behalf of our pastor, Mr. Ronald K. Harris, I just wanna say thank you for coming and doing that. But let us pray right now. Father God, in the mighty name of thy son, Lord, we thank you for lending an ear, Father, to the troubles and the words that are going on in this community, Father. Lord, we know that there are troubles all around the world and all things of all manner, Father, but we thank you for just taking the time out on this day, just to hear our words and our petitions that we send up to you right now, asking for a prayer, Father. Lord, we pray right now for peace. We pray for love. We pray for understanding. We pray for unity of family, community, and hope, for all the things that we endeavor to have in our lives each and every day, Father. Father, we just thank you for just allowing us to come to, come together on this time and this hour, Father, just to hear the words, the cares and concerns of all of the people. Father, we thank you. We know that if we place it and put it in your hand, that all things will be made well. Lord, we ask now that you give us the patience. Patience, wisdom, and God is to wait upon you, Father, to bring your word into our hearts, into our minds, and to it comes to fruition in our lives each and every day, Father. Lord, we know that you are a waymaker. You are a doctor that has never lost a patient. Lawyer that has never lost a case. You are a loved one that has never turned loose of your children. And Lord, we know that you won't turn loose of us right now. Well, Father, these are the prayers that we ask of you as we go forth, as we wait upon your petition. Father, these and all the many blessings, in the mighty name of Christ Jesus, we ask and pray. So we all say, "Amen, amen, and amen."
All right. That concludes today's town hall, family. East Columbus family, we have refreshments in the back. We wanna thank...